And I manage the outside agency grant program. So I'm coming to you tonight to present a review of the program. And we've gotten some questions from applicants of this, from the community and from the council. So we thought it would be a great time to take a look at the program. And turn it on. I told Bates I wouldn't be a problem child and it's not on. Or the batteries are dead. There we go. Okay. So tonight, we're going to take a look at the current program. We'll look at some information on what our neighboring communities are doing and look at some opportunities for improvement to the program. And I have some questions for the council to consider. This slide shows the current program purpose statement that's posted on the city's website. This has statement has not been updated since the program was established back in the 90s. I'll give you a second to read it over. So the current program serves charitable 501(c)(3) organizations for charitable purposes that serve the community of Tuolatin. In rare cases, we've received applications from organizations that don't meet that status. But then such as Metta, who have then partnered with the school district to act as their 501(c)(3) eligible applicant. The graph on the screen should look familiar. It's what we, the council uses every year to make determinations on funding. The grant program historically has served on average of 15 partners every year, ranging in funding from $1,000 to $5,000, with a total budget being set for $40,000 over the last five years. Total requests over the last five years have averaged $90,000. The historic timeline for the process is typically applications open in July after the fiscal year budget has been adopted and wraps up with partners receiving grant funds in October. The current review process includes staff checking for the applications for current 501(c)(3) status on the Secretary of State's website. Council then reviews the application and funds are allocated. At the following council meeting, a resolution comes back for adoption, awarding the funding amounts. And then applicant is notified, completes a contract and funds are distributed. The program currently has an easy application that takes partners less than 30 minutes to complete and includes minimal questions. The staff effort to review and prepare for the awards is simple and done mostly via email. The contract that we have allows for the city to request verification of funds on how funds are being spent anytime. Though the program. Yeah. Though the program is working well in many areas, we do get lots of questions around specifics, including the purpose of the grant and whether it is limited to just 501(c)(3) agencies, social, social service agencies, or any nonprofit. On, we get questions on how many, how much funding a partner should request. The lack of, the lack of funding limit leaves applicants unsure of how much they should apply for in order to receive enough funding to carry out their entire request. We get questions on how verification of funds are handled and what the review criteria are and what the council is looking for from the request and how it should be evaluated. All those questions led us to take a look at what our surrounding communities are doing. We reviewed similar programs at Tiger, Beaverton, Westland, Lake Oswego, Wilsonville, Sherwood, Scappus and Newport. We found that most aligned their, their program with their council goals and strategic plans by having applicants identify where they fall into those goals. Some included interviews of the partners with subcommittees made up of members of the community or council. They included final reports which requested how funds were spent. Some included a cap on funding and funds varied widely depending on how the program was funded. So some were funded through garbage tax from the substations in their area and stuff like that. The, based on what other programs around us are doing, there were, and there being no program, programmatic changes in the last 10 years, we identified some minor areas for improvement in our program. Those included potentially refining the grant purpose, considering a funding cap, requiring a final report and the opportunity to better highlight partners in the community. The first one was re-refining the current purpose statement and how that could add clarity to the program. Some items that we could consider when redefining the purpose statement could include a connection to the council vision and priorities, who the program serves and who is eligible to apply. Historically, in council deliberations, the council has prioritized distributing funds to many organizations and have typically not distributed more than $5,000 to one organization. Keeping in line with the past practice, it would help applicants to manage funding requests and expectations by putting a funding cap in place of a $5,000. This amount would continue to distribute funds to many partners. Currently, we do not ask organizations to verify how funds are spent. We can do this simply and keep the barrier low for applicants by creating a simple one sheet report with a couple open ended questions. The applications could then be attached to future requests. So when they apply in the next year for funding to speak to the previous year's requests. Some questions we can consider are how did the funds help the purpose of the organization? What value did you bring to the community with the funds? And how specifically were the grant funds used? Another opportunity includes highlighting the program partners. And one easy way we can do that is and it helps increase the visibility of the program is by offering optional opportunities to make presentations to the council, creating social media spotlights on the city's website and writing newsletter articles about programs and events. So with that, here are the questions that we'd like the council to consider tonight. Do you want to redefine the purpose of the program? Do you want to add a funding cap? Do you want to add a final spending report? Do you want to include partner highlights as part of the grant program? Is there any questions?
Thanks Nicole. Questions? Okay, Council President Pratt.
Okay, here I go. These are really thoughtful, excuse me. Talking tonight, they're really thoughtful ideas you have. So I really appreciate it. On the grant purpose, I really like all that you put up there. Like I noticed there's nothing about environmental things on there and there's this whole list and it'd be nice to focus it more on our council priorities. The second one, I really like, I think Council Reyes in particular has mentioned year after year that it would really be nice to keep the focus towards Tuolatin. You know, the residents and all the things you've said work, play and learn here. And then I want to know what, what is meant by social service programs as opposed to nonprofits?
So it could be programs that aren't in 501(c)(3) status but serve the communities. So I know like this is the sustainability network and stuff like that. They would be able to apply for grants without a 501(c)(3) status, though they serve the community of Tuolatin.
Okay. That I think personally, I think that's fine. I'll everybody else. But I'm done. And then your next, on the funding cap, I kind of like the idea of saying, well, generally we don't give more than 5,000, but I would want some caveat. So if there were some, say some emergency situation and we had a fire and people were out of homes that we could make or any council could make an exception in a particular, if that makes sense. But I get that people, like we've had people apply for more than we have this toll. It would be nice to give people some kind of like, you know, generally that's the limit. And then in the spending report, I used to work with a nonprofit and we would always require a spending report. And I think that could tie into all your great ideas for promoting this because we always like encourage photos. So, so I would really like to see that. And I think that would help the next year as we look to like who we're going to give the money to, like if they show us, hey, we did this or that, it really, it really helps us feel that we're doing some good, I guess. Anyway, thank you.
Yeah.
That's like, oh, you're.
Thank you, Nicole. This was really comprehensive. I appreciate the history and such. So I have just a few questions and then thoughts maybe. So I'm curious, so if an agency either cannot receive funds, you mentioned Metta, for instance, like who, if their fiscal agent, traditionally, a fiscal agent then says, I'm going to take a percentage, an administrative percentage. So do we talk about that in the grant application? What is the max or min we will allow? No, we don't. Fiscal agent to take?
No, we don't.
Okay. So I would think that maybe in the application, and I apologize, I should have reviewed that, the application itself a little more clearly. So I just wondered about that. And to Council President, Council President Pratt's statement about more, I can appreciate that we want to serve as many of these groups that are serving our community members as possible. But I wonder if the body would consider, maybe there's one grant that we give or two grants that we give for 7,500 because to run a program or to do some different things, $5,000 isn't what it used to be. And so I would like to have a consideration for, you know, you know, there could be potentially then some higher onus than on the reporting. And I say all this assuming that we have plenty of staff time, which I guess I didn't ask and I don't know the answer to. Like how much are we interested in investing staff time or a community? So I don't know the answer to that. So some of this you may just go, thanks and no thanks, which is fine. But I just wanted to give my comments that I feel like $3,500 is for small grant and then have a large grant is just something to consider. Although I'm not opposed to keeping it at five for everything. And as long as there's the flexibility again, that Council President Pratt indicated. I wonder if there's ever a grantee, like these agencies, there's an opportunity for us to create a better bond with our community. If we had some sort of new grantee event, or maybe not event, but a Zoom sort of thing to explain to people, this is how grants work. This is what is allowable to spend under this grant. Cause I'm assuming when they, you know, when we see these things, we, we just put the money out and we really don't know, but maybe they're just buying lunch with it. And then maybe that is not an, you know, is there a list of things that you can put in and things that you cannot put in? I don't know the answer to that. And so maybe there are some allowable costs and some not that we would want to be able to do a training for, maybe we don't. I just wanted to put that in. And then some mid-grant cycle check-in. I feel like if we're just, okay, you're a nonprofit, we're plopping five grand into your account. Then there's no discussion until they apply for next year. I mean, I'm not, I'm assuming we're not getting program officers and you know, all that sort of thing. But it does seem like an email asking for an update or something like that. It's mid-cycle could be something. And then one other thing I wonder is that I think part of the reporting, I'd love to help if we wanted to come up with some sort of what it's going to look like for what we asked them to give us back in the report. Cause I think it's more than just what you spent, like how did you impact? And did you have to make a shift? Because we all shift. I mean, in the nonprofit, I mean, serving, serving community means shifting.
Yeah.
A lot of times, right? And so, so maybe we could take, take a look at something like how you intended to serve this many people in this way, that what did it, what actually happened? And what were your barriers? What were your successes? You know, tho- those sorts of things. And I'd also written down kind of photo voice. That's something in, in the world I live in that we talk about is how to tell a story a lot of times. And I think that in addition to the great ideas you've put out there as far as social media and such, maybe at, we could invite them to be at Viva Tuolatin and have a little photo booth to help or invite them to the state of the city or something like that, that they could, that agencies could be there and really be highlighted and be seen as partners in our community and where they're impacting. So I, I'd like to be able to see them being celebrated for the work that they're doing. And it encourages other nonprofits and people to get involved that in, in a way that they may not. So probably, and actually I wondered if they said they didn't use the money, the way they thought they were going to, did people ever turn money back in?
No.
But that happens all the time in the grant world.
It has never happened here since I've been here.
So I'm, so I'm just saying, like if they, if it didn't work, sometimes money gets turned back in. And if we don't give them that avenue, they wouldn't know that. Cause you know, some of these agencies that get money from us are multi, you know, they, they bring in hundreds of thousands of dollars. So I'm sure they spend it, but I just, sometimes they don't. Those are my thoughts.
Okay. Thank you.
For the question, Council Brooke.
I appreciate the conversation so far. I also agree that the purpose of the program tied into our vision would be really nice. When we talk about a funding cap, I think that some of the issues that we might run into, but by putting the $5,000, which was historically one of our highest ones, don't we average like a thousand or 2,000?
Or we're around like 2,500.
2,500. So it's not a programmatic amount of money. So in my mind, because there's so many requirements for nonprofits to be doing programs and having reporting to have this symbolic support that we give, a lot of reporting and impact, I would like to be able to see the nonprofits be able to use it, continue to use it, how it's helpful to them. So if they have holes in other programs, if they need more for their general fund and have that flexibility still in place. And I think that because nonprofits in a lot of ways, like we even see when we did our business grants, have so much more responsibilities and requirements in so many areas than other entities. But to be able to have something that's generous from us without a lot of reporting and a lot of work on your behalf, to me to continue that would be good. So to me, it would be like, I wouldn't really want to put a funding cap. I just want to say historically and give context. We average giving 2,500 because we give to a lot of different organizations to show appreciation. And that way, and also spending reporting, I am not in big favor of, although I don't have a problem with them voluntarily doing it, but I do like the idea of highlighting them if they want to be. But I, I would like us to, there's something about me that because the money is so sort of symbolic, to make it a lot of work for the nonprofits, I don't want to add any more work to nonprofits. Those are my two cents.
That's ridiculous.
But thank you very much, Council Hiller. Thank you. I was waiting your response because I know that you work in the world of grants and nonprofit. And I know it's going to be a very challenging time, but I do want to affirm that just a simple update would be nice on what the money was spent for the year prior before they eligible for the next, next fund potentially. I'd like the idea of having a, a new organization opening. So there's an organization that has not been eligible for whatever reason. At least updated to allow a new one per year to be eligible. And that's pretty much, I think there's probably more to discuss with a lot of the comments that Council Hiller said, and I think that was very well said. Thank you.
Council Saco.
Thank you, Nicole. Great information. As far as the, the cap goes, I agree with some comments that were previously made to have it more as a guideline or an understanding of what we've historically given versus making it a strict cap. And then as far as the reporting goes, I would like to see something at the end. And I don't think it has to be something very rigorous, but just a, an update of how the funds were spent, how it impacted the community. Just to help us make decisions moving forward, because we see the same, the same organizations year after year. So we can make sure that we're making well-informed decisions as well. But I also don't like the idea of a rigorous report, just something to, to give us a little bit more information, I think would be helpful. Love the idea of the, the purpose being more closely aligned with our, our goals. And then is there one more thing I'm missing? And the highlight of the program partners, I love that. I love, before I was on council, I didn't know that we did this. And so I think it's really important for the community to understand how, how we're partnering with local organizations and the good that's being done in the communities. I think that's really great.
Sure.
Sorry, I did forget one thing. I would love to see it be a suggestion for the council to have an invitation to any celebrations when the, the bodies are using their, the, the funds that we are helping impact. Cause I think just a, a great way to close that, sir.
Just to, I'm, I'm wondering if instead of a funding cap, you could just send them that the average grant we gave out last year was X amount. So it gave them kind of a guideline. And then back to what Councilor Hillier, I think was referring to. I, I personally think it would be nice to require that it's, and I don't know how you do this with social services, but like for nonprofits that it's actually part of their program services, what they're doing for the community. And as opposed to administrative cost. And that's my last point is that I would really like to have on that questionnaire you send them, what percentage of their total funds are, are, are for administrative costs and what are for program services?
I agree with pretty much 99% what was said so far. The only thing I'm hung up on is not for profit versus social service programs. I'm more of a traditional kind of person when it comes to has to be a 501(c)(3). Cause I could see us disputing what agency is what? Is it really a social service agency? It could be a fuzzy, you know, organization no one really knows about, whereas if it's gone through the IRS process, it's being certified. That to me is a barrier that, that is different than just spinning up some not-for-profit social service thing without a certification. I'm just kind of nervous about that, that we, you know, we'd be questioned on, you know, allocating money to a an organization that is basically fake vapor, you know, versus a 501(c)(3). That's the only thing I would twist. Suggest that I'd stick to that, but like all the other suggestions of no cap, but give them a history of what's been awarded, simple reporting, being involved with helping promote the organization. I think those are all great.
And, and non, I'm sorry. And, and nonprofit agencies, I think that's a really good point. We are stewards of the community's money. And I, I think that's a really a good point, but also nonprofits, I mean, they're used to reports, even, even if it's four sentences and a couple of dollars, like they, they do this, thank you. If it was a report that simple, but they're used to reports and that, that's something that they're going to show their supporters as well. So it's, they're going to be doing a report one way or the other. So.
Council Brooke.
I just was going to say, I think that it's good to have, as far as historical funding, having a range, because I think that right away, if we have something like, like right when we said 5,000, then there's, there's an assumption that we give an average of 5,000, which we don't. And I think when, when we say something like between, we gave away between, you know, 1,000 and 2,500 per organization, people have a better understanding of what we're doing and know that they're not going to be able to build a whole program around this money.
Yeah.
I think it's a really important to like limit those expectations. And then to me, that's why the expectation around spending, I'm, I am more fluid with that because I think if it goes to the organizational success, then any of the organizational overall reports goes into how they're spending their money, but making them spend money on certain things, such a small amount of money. I just don't, I just don't understand that.
See what you mean?
So we'll look at redefining the purpose and aligning it with the council goals and visions. We'll continue to only provide funds to 501(c)(3) organizations that are serving specifically the Tuolatin community. We'll not add a funding cap at this time and provide just more guidance on a range of what we funded in the past. We are going to do a simple final report. Okay. And then we'll update the application to include the option for some marketing opportunities, like presenting to the council, social media and make sure that we're inviting them to future events as partners. Okay. So that's it. So I'll make those changes and then we'll go ahead and open the grant cycle August 1st. We'll let you guys know when that's open. So you can let people know as well, but we have a distribution list that we'll send all that funding to.
Right.
Are we not interested in requiring that it's part of program services? Or we're just going to leave it open? Okay.
Yeah, leave it open. Okay. Thank you.
Cause in the application, they're going, they're going to say what they're going to use it ideally. Yeah. And if they're a returning, so we'll see what they did with it the year before.
Yes.
All right. Thanks Nicole. All right. Next up, we have a building division fee schedule review and update led by Susan or Suzanne, sorry. Welcome.
Mayor and Council, I'm Suzanne Tyler. I'm the building official. And I'm, I'm here to provide a brief presentation outlining the fees and services of the building division and to outline why the staff is going to be requesting a fee increase this year. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. The building to bring this a little closer. The building division staff is composed of a building official and eight staff in the building division. We have one senior plans examiner, three plans examiners slash inspectors, two permit coordinators, one project coordinator and one code compliance officer. What do we do? Tuolatin's building staff. Tuolatin's building staff strives to provide exceptional customer service through responsible, effective communication with our customers and consistent administration of building codes. The primary objective of building codes and standards is to protect public health and safety, the general welfare and, and people as it relates to construction and occupancy of buildings and structures. As such, we provide for public safety by providing plan review and inspection services for proposed construction work. The building division fields all phone calls and emails related to permitting activity and permit applications for proposed construction work, including building, mechanical, plumbing, fire alarms, fire sprinklers and solar roof installations, among other types of permits. We issue permits after performing plan reviews and then inspect that work after permit issuance, both in person and by digital means, using the city's online permit system, software and related tools. Building permits are mainly about safety. By enforcing construction standards, they give you another occupants of the building, the best chance to avoid fire, structural failure or something as simple as a, a child getting his head caught between stairposts. If you decide to move, the process also protects future owners. Plan review is a process of reviewing plans for proposed work before permits are issued to ensure compliance with minimum code requirements. Examples of plan review would be a plan review to ensure that buildings are designed to be structurally sound, to verify that sprinkler systems are properly installed and that they're designed to operate during the fire, to ensure buildings are insulated to minimum code standards, to verify their guardrails and handrails on elevated surfaces, to verify that there are sufficient numbers of exits and that those exits are spaced properly so that people could easily exit a building during a fire, to verify water and sewer lines are in correct locations. To verify water and sewer lines are in correct locations, that they're sloped to drain and that they connect to the proper city resources. To verify fire alarm systems are designed to signal during an emergency and that notification appliances such as horns and strobes that we see in rooms every day are properly located so that people can see them and hear them when they're operating. Inspectors go to building sites during the process of construction. Likely more than once as the project progresses and they verify that the work is constructed in accordance with the approved plans and that the methods and materials used are in compliance with minimum codes and standards. And that the final construction ensures that a building takes people in property with safe construction. This last fiscal year, we processed over 1,500 permits, an increase of approximately 19% over last year. The permits included alterations to commercial and industrial structures, as well as existing tenant spaces, additions to new homes and the construction of new dwellings. We also completed over 4,200 inspections for those permits that were processed. That's a lot of inspections. This number is approximately 20% more than were performed in the previous year. Our code compliance officer supports department enforcement actions and collaborates with the community services officer with city police to ensure safer buildings through code compliance. Our plan review turnarounds are commensurate with other building departments in the tri-county area. Building division funding. We are required by state law to have a dedicated fund that is separate from other city funds. Our revenues are dedicated to supporting plan review, inspection and administration and co-compliance functions within the division to protect people and property and to provide for the safety of our community. This dedicated fund ensures that the fees collected only support building division functions. We're self-sustaining and we're not supported by the general fund. Until now, building jurisdictions have not received any formal guidance from the state of Oregon. Building codes division regarding reserve amounts is now recommended that we maintain 18 months of reserves. Reserves are the portion of the dedicated fees used to maintain a stable funding for local building departments to maintain a stable workforce through economic ups and downs. Although we've been very careful to live within our means, our costs associated with providing these services have increased over the years. And as a result of this fiscal prudence and the fact that expenses have outpaced our revenues, we have drawn down on our reserves. Our last fee increase was in 2005, 18 years ago. This chart shows the building fund revenues, expenditures and reserves from fiscal year 1920 through the projection for the fiscal year of the 2022, 2023 year. Revenues in this fund fluctuate from year to year depending upon development activity, while expenditures stay pretty constant, growing at a rate of increases in personnel costs. Personnel costs, personnel services costs make up a high percentage of the fund's expenditures. Reserves are maintained to help the fund whether short-term downturns in development and the fluctuations in revenue that occur year to year. The state recommends reserve balances equal to 18 months of expenditures. The construction industry tends not to follow broader economic trends and they typically experience downturns before the rest of the economy. Economic downturns can also create an increase in building inspection program work as more people do smaller projects themselves. Raising the demand for inspections while lowering the overall permit fee revenue. Small commercial tenant improvements took the place of larger new construction projects. Our expenses remain the same, but our revenues were not proportionate. You, I noticed in this chart, you'll notice that there's a significant drop in expenditures between the fiscal year 1920 and 2021, and then they're increasing at a fairly steady pace. In fiscal year 1920, the building fund had a one-time contribution to the construction of the Tuolton city services building, this building. Accounting for the higher level of expenditure that year. On the revenue side, the pandemic had a significant impact on building division revenues. As evidenced by the revenue on this graph. It's taken us 10 fiscal years to recover and with the increased development in the fiscal year 2022, 2023, we're projecting to have matching revenues and expenditures. The fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget is projecting revenues to be less than expenditures. With the gap between the revenues and the expenditures of the last few years, our reserves have dropped to approximately six months of total expenditures, which is far below the recommended 18 months. We've not been able to keep up with the pace of rising costs, such as inflation and increasing costs for supporting workforce. We have a good, we have good turnaround times, but we're on a trajectory to disrupt our review timelines if we are unable to fund the staffing levels. Our revenue comes from building, plumbing and mechanical permit fees. Most fees will be adjusted, given that we haven't increased our fees since 2005. Some fees are adjusted based upon guidance from the state, such as changes in the fee structure for non-prescriptive solar permit installations. And some fees are not. Free submission meetings occur with staff and customers to assist people in the application process and to verify that plan submittals and accompanying documentation is complete. This process aids in improving plan review times as many initial submittals lack all of the information needed to complete the plan review process. A change of contractor fee is proposed to compensate for the amount of administrative time spent in this process. When COVID hit, we were, we moved to a completely electronic online process. And additional software and hardware was required and maintenance costs have increased and they're expected to increase over time. Technology fees have been added to provide us with the tools needed to continue providing these high-quality services. Rate on mitigation requirements are fairly new code requirements that mandate new homes provide protection methods against infiltration of this odorless, colorless gas and actually in some commercial circumstances also. And this involves both staff plan review and inspection time that was not previously accounted for. Non-factory dwelling placement fees were not in our previously adopted fee schedule and we've added them to capture specific fees where mandated by the state of Oregon to collect, such as the $30 cabin fee. In the process of evaluating the fees and changes to our structure, we looked at the actual amount of time that of staff time versus, versus the amount of time that we collected for. One example of this is a typical plumbing permit for the addition of a bathroom to a single-family residence with a typical amount of staff time spent. We found that based upon personnel costs, vehicle costs and administrative time, we're not collecting enough money to compensate the city for the staff time. In the best case scenario, with no additional inspections, be two failed inspections. And this is, this is one example of the amount of money collected versus the amount of staff time spent. Staff compared the building fees for 16 jurisdictions in the tri-county area to evaluate Tuolton's fees compared to other jurisdictions. In all cases, Tuolton's building fees were either the lowest or nearly the lowest of all jurisdictions compared. Included here are comparisons of a new commercial office building and a new single-family residence with some of those jurisdictions. And as you can see, we are either the lowest with our fees or close to the lowest. We've looked at each of the fees associated with the permitting and the amount of time it takes the staff to do this work. And we will be proposing changes to our fee schedules to more accurately reflect the amount of time spent by staff in performing these duties. There's been a lot of discussion over the years amongst Oregon building departments as to what the appropriate level of resource should be. But we haven't received any guidance until now, but now we have this clear direction. State of Oregon building codes division has indicated that building division should maintain roughly an 18-month reserve of funding. As a result of this guidance from the state, we feel it's appropriate and necessary to right-size our fee schedules to build our reserves and to account for the increased costs of a new building deployment. For Oregon state law jurisdictions, proposing changes to their fee structures must give notice to the Oregon building codes division so that all shareholders can provide feedback and comments. We have provided this notice to the state. Additionally, we posted notice to our website, offering an opportunity for feedback and comments to our community. And our next step is to come back to council for a public hearing on the proposed fees. Do we have any questions?
Thank you very much. It's always good to get a better education.
I know there was a lot of information.
Thank you for taking care of our city. So prudently, I, how long will the proposed increase take to build the 18-month reserve this filing?
You know, I am, it works, we don't have an exact timeline, but my guess is between five to 10 years. I mean, if we, if we take it the rate at which we're increasing the fees.
So did the state put a mandate on when the 18-month suggestion had to be in place or?
There was no mandate on that.
Okay.
No.
And you feel comfortable with this?
I do.
Thank you.
Gonzalez. What is our current backlog currently in permits right now? Any requests?
Commercial and residential.
Should both of, if you have both.
Well, residential is probably about two to three weeks and, and commercial is probably amongst our, our expected timeline, about four to five weeks. It, it depends upon the project. Some projects take a longer period of time because there are other division approvals that are also required in order to, to issue building permits. And sometimes those approvals aren't necessary. It's necessary to receive those prior to the building department approval.
In units, how, are we backlog in units permit request right now? Do you know how many? So how many permits are we backlog currently? Not time, but in, in permits request to be filed, permit request.
So sorry, can you repeat that? I couldn't quite hear all of that.
Myself as well. I'm wondering if, how many permits request we have in the pipeline right now?
I don't have that information right now, but I can get that information for you.
Great.
Other questions? Councilbrooks?
I just want to thank you for telling us more about this and if, can we go back to the slide where we're showing the rate increase in where we would be comparable to other cities?
Sure.
Yeah. So to me, and this is for both residential and commercial that would have impact. I think that it's important to stay steady. And I think that builders do business in all these areas and are used to this for cost of business, you know, for cost of doing business. And to see us be behind in having other resources go to this instead of the permits themselves. And I guess this is from our prudent reserve. I, anyway, I'm glad that you brought it to our attention because it seems that we should get in line as quickly as we can.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Other questions? So I got one question and it goes towards where I think Counselor Gonzalez was going. So with this fee increase, will it allow you to add additional staff? Cause I'm hearing of backlogs from commercial development. And does this fee increase incorporate the ability to hire additional folks in the building division?
The fee increase did not incorporate additional funding to support additional full-time employees.
Can we look at that?
We can look at that.
I mean, cause that's, that's going to the backlog. I mean, I realize you have a small shop and right now I know it's super busy and that's the complaint counselors are getting that permits are taking a while. And when I tell folks, we have a small permitting staff, that's, they don't want to hear it. You know, so I, I'd like to factor in the ability, yes, to keep up the cost. We don't want to do this at a loss. But also factor in some dollars for adding additional heads into planning division. Cause it doesn't seem like it's going to really bump us up. It's not going to spring us ahead in your comparisons that much. But I think you, from what I've been hearing over the last few years, I think you guys need additional bodies. And if your funding stream is through this, we've got to incorporate that. I don't know what other people think.
So I'm curious, I think that's a great point because I, I've heard that myself. And not understanding the process, I didn't have a great answer. So is it seasonal? Like, does it ebb and flow? So does it make, I mean, what are other cities that have a 10-day turnaround? For instance, or something, if that's a thing. I mean, do they have seasonal work or?
So I can tell you that for non-complex single-family residences, there is a requirement in the state of Oregon that cities and jurisdictions try to maintain a 10-day turnaround for the review of these non-complex houses. So there are some jurisdictions that try to adhere to that, but sometimes it's, it's very hard to do that. I can tell you that Washington county for the 21 years that I worked there, it was very, very difficult. We had, you know, dozens and dozens and dozens and dozens of houses and with the staff that we had, it was, it was very challenging to try to maintain that 10-day turnaround. And so with regard to cyclical amounts of work, there is definitely an ebb and flow with regard to plan review and inspection. In the summertime, it's much busier than in the late fall and the wintertime, you know, when the rains come and it gets colder and we have ice and snow and things like that. So summertime is typically our very busiest season and it starts to ramp up in early spring. People start seeing flowers come out and, you know, and they want to build. And then as fall comes and, and things start getting colder, the numbers of permits and inspections decrease and you see more interior work the next year. In summertime, we see lots of re-ruffs. We see lots of, lots of additions and decks and, and commercial tenant improvements that involve the exteriors of buildings. So definitely a cycle.
But I think you're still saying, and what we're still, I think, hearing is that there would be enough work for one, a full FTE year round. Would that be true?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that one more time?
I'm sorry. Yes.
I'm a little hard of hearing. Sorry.
I'm sorry. I can, I can do better. I'm curious. And then in your opinion, you believe that there's enough work year round, all 12 months for a full FTE to add?
I think that that could be considered. I would have to take a look at the, the work and the, the typical permitting numbers. I think that that could happen. Yes.
My question kind of played on that, like concerning 124th and Norwood and the growth. I would think you'd project a lot of permitting that's going to be done in the next five years yourself. So.
A lot of houses.
Overall workflow for the next five years, do you see that increasing?
I do. Yes. We have a, currently we have a subdivision, Autumn Sunrise that is coming through and I'm sure you've all heard of it. And there's shortages to it with lots of houses, hundreds of houses. And so we will be keeping busy for the next year or two, at the very least. Yeah.
So to me that, that if we're already kind of behind with the current and you're going to get even So to me, that, that if we're already kind of behind with the current and you're going to get even increased workflow, I think that kind of supports looking at adding at least another FTE.
Or factor into your fee increase when you can reach that point. I'm not going to tell Charlotte what to do on this part, but at least have the money there available if you do need to do it because I don't want, don't want, while you're building up your reserves again and you have to hire someone, I don't want you to have to dip into that, get further behind that curve.
Right, right. And I, and I hear exactly what you're saying. One thing that I would like to, to, to say is that there are very few of us in the state of Oregon. It's hard to find plans examiners and inspectors. There's not a lot of us who have the certifications and the experience. We always try and we're always looking for good people, but it's challenging.
I got to lean into the microphone. That's why it's almost not a seasonal thing. Because you got to hire someone, train them and keep them. So you can go back and forth.
Right, right. So I think I hear you saying that, that you would like to make sure that we, our turnaround times are as, as low as possible. And so we need to do an analysis and I'm sure it's out there of what impact bodies has on that, which of course it, it does. And, and I, and I'm curious and we can go back and look at this of like how, how we can decrease our turnaround times, but you know, what, what we need to do to increase our turnaround times and.
And incorporate in the fee so you that, we're not doing it at a loss.
Yeah, yeah. And building our reserves still, so. I, thank you for that guidance.
Sure. Council gives up.
So if I heard you correctly, the last time the increase was proposed was eighteen years ago. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's a long time.
Those before my time.
I think so much expense has, I mean, for us is literally every, every year we're asking for a five, six percent increase on our current contracts in the private sector. So maybe we can add into our threshold to, we may review this every five years and so that we can, we can stay pace with these fees versus having to come back after a long time and ask for a big chunk of increase just to make up what's coming.
One of the items that I have included in the proposed fee schedules is an increase yearly for the next five years based upon the construction cost index. So it's an indexing fee to account for that, that inflation and other costs associated with doing business. The state of Oregon typically does not like to see jurisdictions include something like this for more than five years before being reevaluated. So that's why I proposed it for a five-year period.
Makes sense. All right. You have what you need? Got your direction?
Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you for coming.
I will, I will, I just want to give Suzanne some kudos. It is really hard to find really good building officials and permits, permit people and inspectors. Suzanne is one of the best in the state and plus she's nice and easy to be with, which isn't the case for all of them. And she has accumulated a team that is second to none. Honestly, we've got former building officials on our team and she's just pulled people by the force of her personality and, and who she is. She's brought really good people to, to Twalton. So kudos to Suzanne.
Thank you, thank you.
All right. That brings us to our agenda review and roundtable. I've got Council Gonzalez is up to the pledge tonight. And then they, we don't have any proclamations. Any questions, concerns on the consent agenda? All right. We're going to have price, a little bit of agenda management. The recipient of the science and technology scholarship might not be able to get here till eight. So probably push that to the back so she can be here to shed a calendar mishap. So we'll push that to the end of our meeting tonight. And with that, I think that's all the basics. We'll go ahead and do the council roundtable and we'll start with Council Gonzalez.
Just want to say the weather's been very nice. I don't have any council updates to report on at this moment.
Council Brooks?
Hi, also, I just want to say happy Fourth of Independence Day, everybody, and I also don't have any updates.
Council Sacco?
I also don't have any updates.
Quick, I'm sorry, oh, you're.
Ditto.
Council President Pratt?
I also have no updates.
I've got a very small one. It was a quiet week in terms of meetings, but not email. Was interesting on the twenty-eighth of June, met over at Northwest Naturals building over here. I call it Twalton, they call it Sherwood, but I think it's Twalton for the District Export Council of Oregon. Denver knew this organization existed. Its whole purpose is to help small community-sized businesses start exporting their products overseas. They act as mentors. They work with the Commerce Department at the federal level and with Business Oregon to help get your business lined up and doing, you know, selling your products overseas. They had representatives from Poen, Sam Medical Products and Thea Technologies on how they've done it and how well they're doing overseas and selling. I didn't realize part of the US Commerce Department, there's a US commercial service and they have a representative here in Portland who will help you make appointments overseas and get US Embassy staff involved to help you meet the people you need to meet overseas. Business Oregon has grant programs for you to set up, go to trade shows overseas to get your products overseas. Don sent me the invite and it was just an eye-opening experience of always, there was a company there who was just starting to do food products who want to get overseas and they were all over him, going to help him try to get his products exported to the Asian market. So it's pretty cool. Then met with Rachel Duke of SEPA on the sixth and we're in discussions, they, they have a concern about the school districts. We all know that Autumn Sunrise in SEPA and the Plantard Gardens will be in Sherwood. So we were in discussions, I know TTSD would love to be, have those kids go to TTSD. And there's a challenge for anybody who's going to be living in Autumn Sunrise, especially the kids who are in Plantard Gardens to go to Sherwood and participate in sports and stuff, especially those kids who have special needs. That according to Rachel, TTSD has very good special services for kids at risk, either emotionally or physically, all that stuff. Sherwood isn't as good at it, per her opinion. So we're just doing some phone calls to see what's involved. Is there a voucher program for kids who want to, you know, switch out of Sherwood to Tiger, to Tiger Twalton? If they had those kinds of special needs. But she wanted to get us, get it on the radar for us that, you know, we've also got to look at those folks who are going to be living in the homes behind Plantard Gardens might be in the same predicament. This has always been a question of why, when you're staring at Twalton High School, you're going to be going to Sherwood High School. So we're going to start, like I said, make phone calls to see what's involved. If there's a, a map change we can do or an agreement or something. Because you hear, you know, TTSD has space, Sherwood is packed to the gills. But it all comes down to funds per head from the state of who attends your school. So no one wants to give up kids. But just to let you know, it's, it's floating out there. So to hear about it, just concerns about the school district serving that area. And if Sherwood can do it, nothing, not to besmirch Sherwood, but I guess there's a different vibe in TTSD than there is in Sherwood school districts. And the non-meeting stuff is, it's just been non-stop tolling letters. Getting back to ODOT about the RTAC questionnaires that they had. And then the Metro RTP, Clackamas County and Washington County have concerns with their RTP plan that's coming out of Metro. We're going to discuss it at the Washington County Corning Committee, things that, and speak with Mike. He has some serious concerns that might have negative impacts on Twalton. So we're going to try to get those addressed with Metro. But lots of emails and that stuff. There seems like four or five a day. And that's it. Anything else? That's cool. We got a half hour here. So I'll go ahead and recess the work session and we'll come back with our regular council meeting at seven o'clock. We'll see you in thirty minutes.